Sir.
I just.
Sir.
Nerves to speak.
Sir. Sir.
Die.
Chris, speak to the whole body here. If you have anybody, thank you.
Well.
Thank you.
I didn't know we can no longer address single commissioners now.
That people are too frightened to speak their mind and say what they think. What do we do about this?
I think you say what you want to say and to hell with the consequences.
Let's get ready to rumble.
The commission will not discuss or debate these items nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Any general public comment?
Hi. My name is Sue Herring. I live here in Lawrence. I'm here tonight because in today's edition of the Lawrence Journal World, there's a new name for a new type of community sought by soulless softies gaining more and more traction here in Lawrence. It's a collection of requests and demands typical of soft people. It offers nothing of benefit to we, their hosts. It begins the process of sucking us, their hosts, dry. Nowhere has there ever been an outcome other than disaster from policies that cater to softies. Sometimes the disaster is slow in coming. San Francisco is an example. Forty-five years ago, it was a vibrant and beautiful city. I've been coming and going from there for 50 years. I know this firsthand. Now it's a carcass picked apart by parasites and scavengers. I'm using sharp words and sharp images and mean words tonight. I hope they hurt. As some pain now may alert the five of you and others to the fact that we are circling the drain by catering to softies and people who sidestep laws and demand the communities do the same. This is not a path to health as a city and a community. For example, inviting a drag queen to read to children in the effort to mislead them into thinking that abnormal lifestyles lead to success. It's a lie and it's evil. Catering to indigents who will not use the facilities at the homeless shelter by allowing camps. Allowing someone to shoot at pedestrians in our downtown without the consequences provided by our sentencing guidelines. Do I need to go on? Becoming a safe haven declares state law and establishing established sentencing guidelines to be null and void here in Lawrence. It paves the way for Lawrence to be the perfect host for people who defy the law. Thank you.
You are the City of Lawrence. When I get my water bill, it says City of Lawrence. I don't want to pay for fluoride in the water. It's not good for us. A while back, it was admitted at a city council meeting that we pay for fluoride in our water to the tune of $10,000 a year. It needs to stop. This action against your citizens is right up there with chemtrails and allowing things like high fructose corn syrup and yellow and red dyes in our food. What is wrong with you government officials that you don't try and do more or anything about this kind of destructive and genocidal behavior? You stood up here a while back and announced a Great Water Awareness Day or Month or whatever that was. Our water sucks. I know. I distill it. You're all about raising awareness for homeless people, black people, Indian people. How about raising awareness for all people? They are literally poisoning us daily every way they can. They robbed us of one of the best medical procedures for COVID, ivermectin, while giving us remdesivir and ventilators, which was worse, which was the worst treatment and in fact, it killed people. Genocide, totally backwards. Everything is done to us at the hands of people like you. The good ones are few and far in between. All I ask is that you be good for us and your family and your friends. We all live under the same sky in the same system. It surprises me that more of you don't try to do better for the sake of all humanity, especially Lawrence and the U.S. Our FDA sucks, our CIA sucks, our FBI sucks. It seems like you do too. Stop putting that crap in our water. We have enough to worry about without calcification of pineal glands. Did you know on March 15th, 2023, the U.S. government released a report that it had suppressed since May of 2022 on the effects of fluoride on our kids? It took a lawsuit to get the results of this six-month review of dozens and dozens of studies, which was funded by the taxpayers. Here's the conclusion off page 467 of the report. The consistency of the data supports an inverse association between fluoride exposure and children's IQs. That means as fluoride goes up from drinking water, toothpaste, dental cleanings, whatever, IQs go down in the developing brains of our kids. Who would want to block that information from the public? Probably dentists. There are arguments both ways on fluoride and tooth decay, but nobody expected neurological damage. I think it's time to stop putting fluoride in our water. People can choose to supplement it with tablets if they want, but they can't choose not to use the city water. By the way, 98% of the Westward World doesn't drink fluoridated water and their kids' teeth aren't rotting away. So COVID is one of the newest government scams and fluoride is one of the oldest. A real class act, you guys are. Please take it out of our water. Thank you.
Hey, I was already next in line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see there was a line.
Yeah, there is. All right. Firstly, I'd like to say, sorry, lead poisoning has caused that much damage by the way.
Sir, 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 sir. Address the commission here, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Could I have your name, please?
It's okay. Just. I am allowed to reject any request to know my name. Besides, everybody here already does.
I don't.
I don't care.
I'm glad you brought that to my attention.
First, I would like to encourage the city commission to pass the ordinance that is put before them later tonight.
Sir, that's going to be discussed later in the agenda, so you can talk, you can do public comment at that time.
However.
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 Thank you very much.
That's not the only thing I'm talking about.
Why don't you stop interrupting?
Yeah.
Please.
Let her speak.
However, I would also like to encourage the city to continue moving forward discussing similar matters of homelessness that have plagued our city, the fact that our citizens are in need of help and the fact that even though one ordinance is about to be passed, is about to begin the process of being passed tonight, the fact is, one move is not enough to protect everybody in our community, in the communities that we care about and in this city. Fact is, the work here will not be done tonight. We still have people moving against us as, you know, shown by public speakers a few minutes ago. And we still have imminent dangers to people that we care about because of the subpar living standards of our society. The fact is, not all of these are our city's fault. Not all of these are our city's, like, our city's unique problems, but we still have a responsibility to protect our people and care for our population to the best of our ability. And frankly, I have not been seeing that. Frankly, I see a bunch of city commissioners who can't even be bothered to show up to every city commission meeting when such pressing matters are being discussed. Some of you haven't even, haven't even attended via Zoom. Some of you haven't listened to what the community has been saying at all in any way, shape or form. And while people are actually living on the streets and while people need urgent help, we're gratifying the most frankly outrageous members of our community, spending our tax money, listening to baseless conspiracy theories and outright bigotry by those that would call us soft or that would frankly throw away every single aspect of healthcare that we actually take functionally for granted in our modern society. Fact is, there are people that are dying waiting for such care. There are people who are dying on the streets and we're wasting time dealing with imbeciles. Because of that, I would like to request that any further conspiracy theories be considered not germane by the city commission going forward and expect to see more of us frankly, because there are more issues that need to be dealt with. We are still not safe. We still have frankly, a need to be here, a need to be directing.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Ma'am.
I think you misgendered that "they" there, Mayor.
I do apologize.
That a hate crime? You know, under the discriminatory act, you guys are going to be proposing that'd be a hate crime, wouldn't it? Are you going to try to get to a point where we're not allowed to do that kind of stuff, what you're up there doing and it's just sorry? You guys gonna run a headline about that? Mayor misgenders "they" at meeting? Surely would do it to me.
Right after the proclamation.
Talk about, uh, talk about baseless conspiracy theories. Men having babies, men having periods. Come on, there ain't a bigger conspiracy theory than that. So save your conspiracy theory bullshit for somebody that gives a shit. My name is Dr. Justin Spees. My doctorate is in human development from Kansas State back in July of 2021. I started a protest against the child mask mandates that were in effect in USD 497 for the second time.
Point of order.
So I got tired of the bullshit.
Sir, um, what, what's it do with, with the city? What, what is your?
This is public comment. He has three minutes to speak.
You're out of order?
Point of order.
This is your, this is your warning? One more time and I'm going to have you leave.
So anyways, like I was saying, so when I did my protest, I was billified around here and made it into a, to a political matter, like it was a baseless conspiracy theory, right? Theory, right? Theory, right? Theory, right? Came across the article here the other day. It's from June 26th of 2022. It's from the online journal Eye Perception. It's called Mask Wearing Affects Emotion Perception. As I read through here, I want you to think about this through the lens of what children went through. You all supported masks.
Sir, I'm going to eat. You are not speaking about something that's germane to the city. Commissioner, please.
You all put in a mask mandate that affected.
Sir, you're done. This is your warning. This is your warning. You are not talking about items that are germane to the city, commission.
Shit, I'm not.
And you are done.
Are, gotta be kidding me. You all put in a mask.
Officer, please remove this. We'll step back.
For what? For what?
What? That's insane.
Come on, Mr. First Amendment, First Amendment right guy. Let's go. What do you got, man? What do you got?
I'm not trying to get thrown out with you. I got more important business to do later. Are we, are we in adjournment right now?
Is there recess?
A recess? Okay. I just want to say loudly for everybody, at the point that they threatened to throw me out for stepping up and standing up for that man's right to speak, although I disagree with him, that would have been a direct violation of my First Amendment rights to speak here because she's purposely violating somebody else's and going to throw me out for calling it out. You guys need to realize that's what's going on. I don't, I don't agree with half the stuff that Justin says, but he has the right to speak in here, guys. He has the right to speak, just like I do, just like everybody does, just like every citizen does.
Point of order.
And all you have to do is sit up there for three minutes and listen to us and you refuse to do that. Why? Why? It's our right to speak.
She don't like him. She can't.
There's an election coming.
I act soft, but you are braggling decrepit.
Standing behind me, gonna arrest me?
A lot more knowledge, but you're the idiot.
Get out from behind me, cop. Whatever. What are you gonna do?
That's what happens when you live a little.
What are you gonna do? You think you're gonna put cuffs on me? Get on it.
Unbelievable.
Get on it.
I don't know what you're.
Well, your whole department says they're going to be the first ones to arrest me. Skylar Richardson on the CPRB work group says he's going to be the first one to arrest me as soon as he hits Patrol Division in October. I'm assuming you're all vouching for him. The whole department's sticking up for him. And they're up there conspiring to try to throw me out right now while we're in recess. They're up there conspiring to try to find a way to throw me out. That's what that is. Tony, you need to help them not conspire to throw people out. They're gonna get sued. That's okay. I got it all recorded. Don't worry. You people second guess things too much. You worried about your perception, start acting right. Where are you now hanging back here by me?
Say what? I can stay wherever I want.
They's gotta stay close to me. I might get out of order. You might need to throw me out, Rhodes. It's the First Amendment, fellas. They gotta let us speak. Even if you don't agree with them.
A democracy like the United States, like the United Kingdom, that people are too frightened to speak their mind and say what they think. What do we do about this?
I think you say what you want to say and to hell with the consequences. You gotta be willing to fight for your rights and fight for what you believe in. And if you're a person who believes in freedom of speech, you have to fight and say what you feel and let the chips fall where they may and stand on that. And, you know, it may not be an easy road, but I think you feel better about yourself when you say what needs to be said at the time it needs to be said and not afterwards where you go home and think, I should have said this when that guy was there or when I was there, I should have said that and I didn't. That haunts you more.
Skylar wasn't right when he said I was looking for a way to sue. He wasn't then.
I have no idea.
But he is now.
No idea.
Sure you do, Kevin. Or I'm sorry, that's Rhodes. Is he Justin? Is that right?
That's it.
Justin Rhodes, yeah. Yeah. I, I haven't interfered with anybody, ma'am. Why, why is there a, why is there a question about me right now? Why is that a question? What did I do that caused that question? I defended somebody's First Amendment right to speak and you're gonna talk to me like that? Are you really trying to get involved in this? Why would you do that? Let the commission take the heat. Well, I have a recording a couple of weeks ago where you let just anybody stand here. Actually, it was Jane Eldridge and a bunch of them. So if you guys want to make an issue about that, we can file that and we can show evidence in court. I'm, I'm open to it. Then, then why are you making an issue with me? That felt very singular.
Okay, we're back and we're going to continue with general public comment. Any general public comment on items that are not, not already on the agenda?
I know this item isn't on the agenda because it just happened and it's directly related to company business here, so we're going to talk about it. What just happened during the break in case everybody missed it, because they stopped streaming during that, but I keep recording. Justin Spees was talking. You know, we'd all, none of us really agree with everything he says, but he makes some good points every now and then. But he's talking. This city commission can't just let him go for three minutes. They've got to interrupt him. They interrupted a person or two before him. Well, at least one person. But this city commission, once again, can't just sit for three minutes. So in the process of trying to throw him out, I stand up and I say, hey, it's his First Amendment right to speak. That might have been captured on the stream. Mayor started to reconsider, but then Ms. Sellers decided to jump in and demand that he be thrown out of the room. I may be getting some of this wrong because it just happened right in front of me and you know how the memory is, but damn, you guys can't sit and listen for three minutes. Three minutes. That's all it is. It's three minutes of us up here telling you how we feel. Telling you what we think of what you're doing for the city and how we think the city's doing. And I gotta tell you, the clown show you guys have been running, I, I don't think there was ever a commission in the history of this city that has been able to unite the homeless advocates and the business community. But Jesus Christ, that's where you're at. That, that's where you're at. Because I agree with Rick Renfro more than I agree with you. And what's going to happen is the whole city's going to come together and decide what we're going to do. And whether you get on board or not, you just may not be a commissioner. And I'm talking to Ms. Shipley that doesn't think she needs to pay attention here, because what we say over here doesn't matter. Amber Sellers even has the decency to watch me when I'm speaking, but you can't even look up. Can you not handle it? Looking right at me on a computer screen. Nice to stay behind that. You guys hide behind stuff. I was going to call out that proclamation earlier, but if they're going to accept it, I guess I'm okay with it. But I find it a weasel way out. You guys had an ordinance and you made a do nothing proclamation. How are you going to protect somebody from the effect of? And you know, that's a really good point that Justin made. You just caused effect on a person, Mayor, right after you read the proclamation. What's going to happen? Absolutely nothing. Because that's how it was designed. You say some pretty words and you make people happy, just like Courtney did back in November about homelessness. And look where we are now. It isn't working, guys. It isn't working. And I think you all know that. I think you're struggling to find solutions. You need to listen to people and you need to quit calling people angry and troublemakers when they're bringing you facts.
Other general public comments?
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I would just like to say if masks aren't city commission meeting, does that mean in the future, people can't say, hey, we need people, like diseases up, we need people wearing masks since it's no longer city commission meeting or city commission business? So I do, I do not agree with what the, the speaker got thrown out was saying, though. I, I don't, I don't agree with that message. But what I wanted to talk about is where, when it comes to the homeless problem, we need to be thinking more about prevention. And we, I'm, I'm running for city commission and I've been filling out, you know, candidate questionnaires. And one of the things I put for how can we tackle, like, what can we do for our housing situation? And I put down, do away with the ordinance that prohibits more than three unrelated renters from living together in a house. I asked this question to y'all. If the city found out that four unrelated renters were living together and the landlord then gave one of them 30 days to move out, would that potentially add to our homeless problem? And if the answer is yes, then I, then I challenge you to get rid of that ordinance. Let's let more than three unrelated people live together because it would create more urban density, which is, I believe, a goal of our strategic plan, you know, that in, get more people living. And so, sorry, I, I am blanking out, but... Oh, yeah. And also because it would be cheaper for some people to live, to split a house four ways instead of three ways. And so I just want, I just want to throw that out there. And I'm going to challenge you, Commissioner Finkeldie.
Chris, speak to the whole body here. If you have anybody, thank you. Thank you.
I didn't know we can no longer address single commissioners now. It has to be the whole body. So if, if one commissioner does something wrong, I can no longer call him out, I guess. I have to commission.
I said Courtney and Amber.
The whole commission? So I mean, so that means if one of you does something wrong and I have to blame the whole commission? I mean, that, that's going to be false information for the, the public if I can't address one and have to address the whole. I mean, that, that's, that's a bit much. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ted Boell, North Lawrence improvement.
And you know what I love? Is I just got done saying Courtney and Amber, but you can't say Finkeldie.
And I was just going to challenge him to bring up that ordinance. That's not even.
God, this one's already full of highlights and we ain't even had a public comment yet.
We got on the books of vagrancy, panhandling, and they're on the books. And I had spoken to Mike Amick, our state legislature, and they just need to be enforced. And, you know, the crime rate since 2020 has picked up 50%. And the city, at North Lawrence, the crime rate and violent crime. And look how many people have died in the camp behind Johnny's. Drug overdoses, bludgeoning to death right out here, right out here by some out of state homeless people, transients, which is a problem. And I'm going to tell you, I warn, I would warn these transgender people that you do not enforce the laws when you say you're going to enforce them. You let the out of state, out of county people run this city. And I have called the police three times in two days last week for transient people sleeping in the park bench down there. And had Derek Rogers call the police and then call the ambulance because one of them needed assistance. Then, that same day, that same afternoon, a young man and his two-year-old son that bought a house across the road on North Forest from Walnut Park come over to the park. bought a house across the road on North Forest from Walnut Park come over to the park. That's mostly a little kid's park. And the two-year-old was playing around underneath picnic table, and I heard his dad go, no, 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 don't pick that up. And it was a broken crack pipe. It was a broken crack pipe that was laying there, and I would present that to you, but I won't, and I do have it, and you will get it, and you will get documentation of all of this. We have done surveys in North Lawrence and got input from the residents of their experiences with the out-of-state transients. For instance, down by the boat ramp, down there, and the needles that are on the levee and in our parks, the threats that people have received, and it's all documented. It's all documented and emailed, and I probably got close to 20 of them, and they keep coming in. But Sellers have probably called that hearsay. Now, I know you're going to tell me, don't-
Time. Ted, thanks a lot, time.
No.
Thanks. Next.
Threatened to arrest him! You got a threat to arrest him?
Other general public comment? Nope. Anybody on Zoom? Any general public comment?
David Hamm.
Good evening, commission. My name is David Hamm. Putting a fourth, a, a comment to have ordinance 9999 brought up for public discussion.
Sir, that's going to be discussed a little later on in our agenda, and you can have public comment at that time?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, don't cut him off.
What those last gentlemen just said about some of the ordinances not being enforced by law enforcement are fireworks issues. I get it's 4th of July once a year, New Year's once a year, but Lawrence has a no fireworks policy, no fireworks ordinance. Fireworks go off across the town the entire time period. We have people with PTSD around here, we have veterans around here, we have tons of people around here with pets that are skittish and afraid of all these fireworks. Law enforcement has got to do something about this versus just pushing everything to the wayside. It's, something has to be done. Commission has to do something about this. The chief of police needs to do something about this. If the ordinance is there, enforce it. That's all I ask.
Thank you.
Cheryl Wells.
I'm really concerned that the shelter, the Lawrence Community Shelter, stated today that if they don't get more money, they may have to close. More people are using the shelter since they opened it up for more people, but it's still kind of hard to use because people can't stay there in the daytime, and I see them, they, then they take, I don't know if they don't have lockers out there, but then they're taking all their stuff, and they have to go, you know, go here and there all day long. And I would just think it would be really a sad thing if we lost the shelter, because then, people keep saying you don't want these people to sleep in the street, but if you lost the shelter, that would be maybe 100 more people that would be sleeping outside. I don't quite understand why the shelter is not funded better. I mean, we don't expect the treatment of recovery centers to go on donations, or other kinds of outreach, you don't expect that to go on donations. It's a vital city service, and I hope people will contribute to them. It was started specifically, I remember very well when it started, because people with behavioral health problems, mentally ill people, and people with dual diagnoses were dying. There was a woman right under one of those bridges, right by the city hall there, that, that had schizophrenia, that died of heat stroke. And, you know, when I go down to Dare, there was a woman, some of these people cannot fend for themselves, there was a woman with schizophrenia laid down to go to sleep on that cement slab right there in front of Dare. It's, it's a, it's a sad situation that some people that are so disabled just really don't have a place to go. Thank you.
Any other public comment on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Okay, item E1A.
I'm going to say its initials, and I'm going to expect that you won't interrupt me, because it is relevant to the minutes, and it's relevant to the city business. Last week, I gave a lot of information about an individual member and asked for communication back from the city, and I never got that back from anybody. And that was about the, the board members on the CPRB worker. And I don't care that it's, that it's an update later, this is about the minutes last week and what happened last week. I asked for information, what we were, how we were going to handle that. What are we going to do about that? And I get nothing. You have a compromised board member compromised by another board member. But nobody wants to address it, and everybody wants to act like it's not happening. It's silence in this whole town, our attorneys as well. You guys all think this is okay. The citizens don't. And it's not just me. The citizens don't think it's okay. Why aren't you guys talking to us? Why aren't you guys answering back about real issues? This is a real issue, and I brought it to you, but I don't hear anything back. You want something other than somebody angry up here? Try something different than what you've been doing. You, you never know, it might work. There's a business leader in town that might be able to teach you that lesson about that.
All right. Any questions on this item? For the applicant? Nope. Okay. Open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
All right, bring it back to the commission for discussion.
That's why they get away with it.
I did make a request to our city attorney to check into the situation, so.
And is that it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm still waiting for response. Any, any other discussion?
We have a work group meeting, and we're still waiting for a response?
So-
The work group is currently meeting.
Is there any other discussion from commissioners? The commission's talking about it right now, so. If not, I guess this is not an item we vote on.
This is your minute, so you will need to make a motion.
I'm sorry, say that again?
This is your item, this is your minute, so you'll need to make a motion to-
Okay, got it. That sounds good. Any other discussion?
I move to approve the July 11th, 23rd, city commission meeting minutes.
Second?
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
I. And it brings so far away. Sometimes it gets hard to breathe when it's all up in my face.